So, this is our second session. We had abbreviated session last week because of the snow problem. But this week, hopefully, we won't have that problem and we can begin to tackle this letter proper. But just by way of review, just so we try to understand a little bit of our context. I was trying to help you understand the occasion for this letter and the timing of it. And as I said, the Jewish world of the first century was in terrible turmoil. With the Jewish wars against Rome, the rebellions, the destruction of Jerusalem and the temple, the reformation of Jewish life that was occurring during that period of time. In fact, I just started reading a book on Rabbi Kiva, who was one of the famous rabbis, and there's a second book that I'm reading which is called As a Driven Leaf, which is all about that period. It's fictional. It's a fictional account. But of the turmoil that was going on at that time and the reformation of Jewish life that occurred during that period of time.
What's the name of the book?
As a Driven Leaf. It's a fictional account of the period. But for our purposes, imagine a messianic Jewish community, a community of Jewish believers, anticipating the imminent return of the Messiah. And instead, getting the total destruction of Jerusalem, the holy city, the temple, all of that, what would that do to morale? Just think about it from those terms, in terms of morale, when all of these things which you saw as unconquerable being destroyed by the Gentiles, if you will. It would cause you to reconsider. You might reconsider whether what you had believed, all that, was actually true. It's not hard to... So, it would be easy to understand why they would be thrown into a state of disbelief maybe even. So, it seems that the author of Romans, of Hebrews, is making an effort to try to encourage. This letter is a letter of encouragement to try to bolster the faith of those. In fact, there are a number of warnings too, which we'll talk about as we go through it. And also an effort at explaining what is happening. Explaining what's happening in terms of God's plan of salvation. And all of these things are very key to understanding what God was doing with all of Israel throughout the ages. So, we're gonna effort to try to understand as much of that as we possibly can. But if we keep that idea in mind, there are a number of different theories regarding the letter to the Hebrews. There are even those who think it wasn't written to the Hebrews. It just became the name of it. But... I'm sorry?
Where did they find it?
Where the letter originates? Well, that's a good question. The letter... Well, there are a number of different theories about where these letters originate. First of all, most of the time, the actual providence of a letter is very difficult to determine. In the case of the letter to the Hebrews, it's particularly so because there's no author named. So, you can't say, "Well, Paul wrote it from prison," or something like that. It was a letter that wound up circulating among the early church and early believers in Messiah. Ultimately, was bound in the rest of the collection of those things which made it into the New Testament and was canonized probably around 200 CE, around there. Those about the time that the canonization of the New Testaments came into being. And there was controversy about whether or not this was one of the letters that was probably more controversial about getting into the canon collection. But ultimately, to what I would only consider to be the Holy Spirit, it made its way into the collection as one of the key letters. So, some things we think we know are that it was of early, you know, middle, late, middle to late for a century because a quotation from it supposedly appears in a letter, a letter of Clement. So, there's a letter of the early church fathers called the Letter of Clement, the first letter of Clement, I think it's called, in which there's some portion of this letter quoted. And that was, that they have a pretty accurate understanding of the timing of that letter around 90 CE. So, this was earlier than that, you know, like that. And of course, there's the controversy over whether or not it was written before or after the destruction of the temple. I think it was after the destruction of the temple because of the issues that he's addressing. And when people say, "Well, he doesn't mention anything about the temple's destruction," you think he would. There's no talk of the temple at all in this letter. All the imagery comes from the tabernacle, which was long gone. Okay? Because he's trying to get at what the meaning of the sacrifice is and so on and so forth. And we'll get into that. So, anyway. Yeah. I mean, if you take a look on page two of your notes, if you have page two of your notes, I don't know if you still have those from last week. I quote from Richard Hayes, who's an author... First, he's a New Testament theologian, just know that. I will be quoting from him a number of times. So, commenting on the possibility, Richard Hayes quotes the following. Pamela Eisenbaum, in a paper delivered to the 2005 SPL meeting, proposes a social and literary setting for Hebrews after the destruction of the Jerusalem temple in a time when Jews and Christians alike were experiencing social and religious dislocation. Consequently, the author is not attacking Judaism, but attempting to fill a desperate theological and social void. That's what I'm saying. Okay? It was very gratifying to find this quote since I've had this theory for 30 years about this letter. That this is not an attack on Judaism per se. It's trying to understand theologically what is happening in the light of social, cultural, political circumstance. Right?
And his book, the book isn't against Jews?
No, I'm talking about, yeah, Hebrews is not against Judaism per se. So, anyway, so that's our setting. With that in mind, now we can try to begin... We could try to begin taking a look at the text, see what we learn from it. Okay? So, let's begin with the very opening to the letter. And we're gonna look at the first verse or two and spend a few minutes right there. So, however long this study takes, this is how long it's gonna take. You know, we're not putting a timeframe on it at this time anyway. So, now I'm using the New American Standard as I usually do. If you have a different translation, it might say something slightly different in some of these places. So, we'll keep that in mind. But meantime, in the meantime, this is where we'll go. So, it begins by saying, "God, after He spoke long ago to the fathers and the prophets in many portions and in many ways, and these last days, has spoken to us in His Son." So, this notion of the Son as the final word of God is very important. In one sense, we can consider the coming of Yeshua and Him as this revelation of God as the second Sinai, if you can think about it that way. So, what happened on Sinai? This God who was unknown to the Jewish people by and large, except through whatever legends they may have had because they were in slavery for those many generations. Now, on Sinai reveals Himself in this way. And you'll recall that amazing scene where Moses goes up to the mountain and says to God, "I want to see you." You know, he wants God to reveal Himself. And God, instead of revealing Himself physically, if you will, we hear of the thirteen attributes of God. In other words, that God is compassionate and kind and gracious and just and so on and so forth. All these attributes of the Lord. And it's through these that we get to understand and know who God is. He reveals Himself through who He is, not what He is. Okay? And now, in Messiah Yeshua, what we must discover is who He is, not what He is, but who He is. Now, it's true that God spoke long ago to the fathers through the prophets. The prophets all came and they revealed some things about God. But whatever those human beings like Isaiah and Jeremiah and Ezekiel, all those guys, could possibly reveal would only be of a very limited sort. They could repeat the words of the Lord, if you will. Sometimes, they acted out symbolically. They performed symbolic acts which helped human beings, hopefully, to understand the character of God better. But whatever they could do could only be of a limited sort. Why? Because they're just men. They're just human beings. And have limitations on the ways in which they could even express who God is. You know, all of us have that same limitation. No matter how eloquent we are, no matter how gifted we may be in terms of communication or personality or whatever it may be, none of us can ever, you know, completely reveal who God is. We can do a shadowy imitation of that. And sometimes it's really good and sometimes it's not so good. But it's only, you know, it's only a mirror reflection of who God could be, who God is, right? Wouldn't you say? And so, how will we know God? I mean, one way we know God is through His people. That is true. That as we attempt to emulate, you know, the attributes of God, you know, kindness and mercy and goodness and all these other, you know, positive qualities, we hope there's something of a reflection of God in them. But whatever it is, it's gonna have its limitations, you know? But here, we're told that in many portions, in many ways, in these last days, God has spoken to us by His Son, someone who is unique in the world. This is not, you know, we're all children of God. It's true. Come on, Luis, right? Yeah, Luis, take a seat. Everyone, this is Luis. No problem. Good morning, Faith. Okay. So, we're all children of God. But when the scripture talks about this Son, they're talking about a unique person, someone who has a unique relationship with God. That as much as we want to have that intimacy with God, we will never share that. You know, we will approximate that as well. You know, we can approximate that as well. But we will only, there's a limit to what, you know, to our ability to share. So, so in Messiah Yeshua, we find the most complete picture of who God is. And this will... And the author of the letter is going to explore this in some detail here in the next, you know, actually throughout this letter, really, but in particular, yeah, we're looking at Hebrews. And we're at the very first verse in Hebrews. Okay. So, there's been a great revelation through Sinai. We cannot diminish what happened at Sinai in any way, that the way in which God revealed Himself and commissioned the Jewish people to be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. All of that remains because the calling of God is irrevocable. It's an irrevocable call on the Jewish people. See, that is part of what you have to keep in mind about chapter eight. How do you reconcile what you think you saw in chapter eight with the fact that in Romans, chapter 11, God calls the calling on the Jewish people an irrevocable call, right? So, you gotta, there's tension there, and that has to be resolved.
That's why I defer and say to a person, "Give me a week and I'll get back to you."
Yeah. It's, there's a lot there, but just to ease your mind, you know? Okay? So, but despite what we have in the Word, see, this is the thing that we have to understand about the Word of God. The Word of God, great as it is and essential as it is, is not enough. There's more that is necessary. Otherwise, the Son of God would never have had to come. Why? If God had, if everything was here in the book that was necessary, then there would be no reason for God to do anything more. This argument has been made in the scripture itself. Paul makes this argument, "Hey, you know, listen, if this wasn't, you know, then there was no need for the Messiah to die." If the Word was sufficient. The Word is not sufficient. The Son was necessary, and the Son is necessary so that we can have the Holy Spirit, which is something we'll discuss as part of this study as well. So, it's in the Son that things are made complete. That there's the fullness of the Word. The Word became flesh and dwelt among us, right? So that we could see, have a more complete picture of who God is and who we are in God. Okay? So, he goes on to say at the second part of verse two, it says, "Whom He appointed the heir of all things and through whom also He made the world." So, as we are introduced to the Son, we're given the first indication of who precisely He is. He's somebody different than everybody else. See, here's one of the things about Yeshua that, you know, we hear more and more in light of the acceptance of the historicity of Jesus, even among, even in the Jewish reclamation. When I say Jewish, I mean the entirety of Jewish, the Jewish community. Their sort of reception of Him as a Jew. That, okay, yeah, yeah, Jesus was Jewish and, you know, He's obviously an important person. But as far as they're willing to go, it's sort of like, well, He was a wise man. Or He was a prophet. You know, and, you know, He was just mistaken, you know, and He got a little cuckoo or whatever, you know, about who He thought He was. You know, so they can accept Him as a wise man and as a teacher. But of course, not as anything more than that. And, but this says something completely different, doesn't it? So, it says, "Whom He appointed heir of all things and through whom He made the world." This puts Him on a completely different, in a completely different place. And this is something we all, you know, I find it's a danger in the messianic Jewish world that we start thinking, you know, like calling Yeshua Rabbi. You know, people did call Him Rabbi in His day. It's true. But when we refer to Him as Rabbi, we diminish Him. Don't call me Rabbi if you're gonna call Him Rabbi. There ain't no comparison. You know? So, the problem is that we cannot consider Him that. Call Him Lord. Call Him Master. You know, don't be calling Him Rabbi. Yeah. Because He was far more than a teacher than one who just, you know, "I can teach, but I cannot do what the Messiah did." So, when we think about Yeshua, I have to think about Him as more than these things. And too often, these are kind of terms that get thrown around in regard to Him. We have to... I'm sorry?
Shamar has a question.
It's like, I'm thinking about the, it was either the Passover table or the betrayal one. Is it, he said, is it I, or is it I, or in Judas, one translation says, is it the Rabbi? So, there's an important distinction there.
Yeah. Again, Yeshua was referred to as Rabbi in those days, from time to time. The reason being is because He personally did not reveal everything about Himself in the earlier days, right? In fact, there were times when people recognized Him or when, you know, you remember the stories where some demon says, "We know who you are. You're the Son of God." And He said, you know, "Be quiet." He tells them, "Be, you know, be quiet about that." Or if He healed somebody, "Don't tell anybody about it." Or the people are clamoring to make Him king, declare Him the Messiah. He says, He runs away. Because there was a timing to this whole thing about how He was revealing Himself. So, it's not, it wouldn't be unusual for people then to refer to Him in a different way, like Rabbi. But what we also have to understand is that Rabbi back then, 2,000 years ago, and Rabbi today are completely different things. Completely.
Now, along the same lines of thinking, in different translations, I find out that they are referring to Him in multiple times as Master. And the translation where they use Lord, it gets confusing, but they're actually saying Master.
Well, you see, so here's the thing about the term Rabbi. So, the term Rabbi could be translated, "My Master." That's one way to translate Rob, you know? It's one way to translate the term. But again, let's recognize what these words meant then versus what they mean now. So, today, when you say the term Rabbi, you're talking about some guy who's gone through a course of study and who might lead a community of believers or Jewish community, whatever, you know, something like that. Although that, you don't have to do that either. You could just be a teacher or something like that. But it's someone who's gone through a course of study for the most part and has received ordination. In Yeshua's time, if they use the term, they might use it for someone who had gathered around Him a group of disciples. So, those people would refer to their teacher as either Rabbi or Master. So, it's a different kind of usage of the title than you would find today, you know? However, for purposes of our discussion, what I want us to know, realize is that Yeshua is much more than that and that we need to understand how much more He is than that. So, He's the one who was appointed heir of all things through whom also He made the world. So, this is speaking of God. God appointed this one, His Son, as the heir of all things and the one through whom He made the world. So, let's just think about this and, you know, let's try to analyze it a little bit. In other words, that all things in heaven and earth belong to Him. Not only that, He made them. He's the heir of all things. So, that means they belong to Him. And He made them. But wait, isn't that what the scripture says about God? Right? I mean, the Bible opens, right? In the beginning, God, and then it talks about how God's Spirit hovered over the first face of the waters. Well, it is just, you know... Well, you know, it might be, you know, listen, the Bible is filled with mysteries, you know? So, the notion that there's some sod, you know what the means, sod means a secret meaning behind the text, it's always there. It's always possible. Lots of different mystical ways of trying to understand the text. There's far more empirical evidence indicating that than something that we have to actually, like, you know, give a mystical meaning to. And we're gonna look at some of that, okay? Believe me, I have a whole list on the other page. Okay? So, but we know that God was the one who created all things. So, how can the author say this about the Messiah? Either he's a total heretic or the Son of God is indeed this unique individual that we need to be considering.
He doesn't deny that God made it. He says He made it through the Son.
Okay. So, you know, you can look at Proverbs, chapter eight, in which the memory, the wisdom of God is there at creation, creating with God. So, it's already indicated in the Hebrew scriptures that there's an agency of God's creative work. You know? So, and that agency is memory, is the Word, right? So, that's why we say, "Butok sheh mar ve'ayah alam," right? Right? In the beginning, you know, blessed is He who spoke and the world came into being. Right? So, it was through the Word that the world came into being. And if Yeshua is, the Word becomes flesh, you see, you see how it all connects, right? And, you know, and just as a validation of this, we can go into Proverbs, chapter eight. You can pick it up in verse 22. And in Proverbs 8:22 and following, what does it say there? It says, "The Lord possessed me," he's speaking about wisdom, the whole chapter is about this wisdom. "The Lord possessed me at the beginning of His way, before His works of old. From everlasting I was established, from the beginning, from the earliest times of the earth. And there no depths I was brought forth." "When there were no springs abounding with water, before the mountains were settled, before the hills, I was brought forth, while He had not yet made the earth and the fields, nor the first dust of the world. When He established the heavens, I was there. When He inscribed a circle on the face of the deep, when He made firm the skies above." So, the memory of the Word is there in the midst of creation with God, okay? So, and then, of course, you know... So, and then of course, you know, you know, John, chapter one. In the beginning was the word and the word was God and the word was with God and, you know, with God and was God. And, uh, it all keeps, things came into being through him and so on and so forth. So there's this connection, um, that runs right through the scripture. And here, what we're gonna do is we're, we're gonna compare things that are said about God with things that are said about Yeshua. Okay? So for instance, the author is telling us, we're not dealing with just the man, but our Savior is God himself. So I went and I looked up a whole bunch of occurrences where God is called Savior. In, cause we, you know, how many people refer to Jesus as the Savior, right? Yeshua is the Savior, right? So I decided I wanted to see how, in the Hebrew scriptures, how this term Savior was used. I didn't write these references on your, on your sheet, but, um, but let's take a look at Psalm 43, for instance. I mean, not Psalm 43, Isaiah 43. So in Isaiah 43. Um, so verse, we'll start in verse three. Says, for I am the Lord your God, the Holy One of Israel, your Savior. I have given Egypt as your ransom, Kush. And by the way, this is the same, has the same root as Yeshua, Yeshua. Okay, it's the same root that Yeshua's name comes from. All right? Uh, I've given Egypt as your ransom, Kush and Seba is your place, right? It goes on to say in verse 11, for instance, is I, even I am the Lord and there is no Savior besides me. Okay? So God is saying he is our Savior. And yet this terminology ultimately gets used in relation to the Messiah himself. Right? No, but I can look up.
Well.
What are you looking for?
The term Savior, as much as it's the translation of that word, I'm sure it is. It's taken on a Christian connotation in that Christianity uses it all the time.
Right.
And when Jewish people hear that word.
Right. It no longer, it doesn't have the same resonance with Jewish people.
Right. Only because it's been taken on in Christianity and used extensively, um, and and has some connotations to it, but, but it actually, I like to hear the Hebrew word.
Okay, I'm gonna let you look at it, because you can read Hebrew. All right? So this is the line, right?
I die Mosheah.
Right.
Mosheah.
Yeah. This is the same word, which, which is the same as Yeshua.
Yeah.
Okay. It's same roots. Okay. If we look at the root.
Literally that says, and there is, literally that says, I, I am God. And there is no other who has been sent. There is no other who has been sent. It doesn't really say the word Savior. Savior is an English translation.
Um, no, 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 this word. Yesh, um.
Mosheah.
Mosheah, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't mean sent. That, that word means, uh, Ashad is safe. Right? So I am your Savior. So, uh, and so it's, I don't, what's this word? You know, okay, so. Niba, Nibaleda, right? How you say that?
Nibau, uh, Nibau Adai.
Nibaladi, yeah. So that means, that just means except, except, except for, I mean, there's no one besides me. And, and, but the word, this is.
There's no one who, there's no one besides me.
Right.
Who has been.
Who has, who, who is your Savior? In other words, you would say, there's no one, you, you can translate into English, there is no one other than me as your Savior. That might be a way to do it. Okay, it's, it's talking about the exclusivity of God in the role of Savior. Okay, that's what I think, anyway. So we're talking about God exclusively as the Savior of Israel. Uh, and yet the same term, the same terminology now, you see, you see the problem. Well, Savior is not a commonly used word.
The only thing I wanted to point out by even bringing up the subject, not to dispute the actual definition of that particular word, but I only wanted to bring out the fact that I just wanted to give everyone an understanding of what the word Savior looks like to Jewish people.
Yeah, it's not a commonly used word. I mean, I found, I think I found like maybe 10 occurrences of the word Savior in the Hebrew scriptures. So it's, you know, Redeemer is more often used, you know?
Right.
Uh, things like that, um, Deliverer, you know, there are, there's other terminology. Uh, for some reason, it caught on in Christian parlance
Right.
to call Yeshua the Savior. Um, and for that reason alone, maybe Jews never rejected the term, you know, just as a matter of, you know, to jar.
At this point in time, modern Judaism, it just conjures up, the word Savior conjures up something in their mind that.
Yeah, it's not a term we, I mean, we don't, it's not a term, although I think we use very often. I'm using it because of, it's what I'm trying to do here is what I'm trying to demonstrate, and what I think the author of Hebrews is trying to demonstrate is the equivalency between God and Yeshua. And this is one way in which he, he determines that the equivalency is through that.
Can I add a postscript to that?
Yeah.
In the, when I was in the Habakkuk Torah study until I got thrown out, um, they don't even say the, the word Jesus. He's the J man.
Well.
And so the point is.
Some things he's been called, so.
Well, yeah, that's true. But my point is that there is denotation for words.
Yeah.
But there's more than that connotation. So that people get a picture in their mind and, and you can't get that picture out of their mind. So you have to give them a different picture in their mind. I guess that's what I'm getting, but I don't wanna get off base. I just.
Again, guys, ladies and gentlemen, for the purposes of this discussion, what I'm trying to do is to demonstrate the equivalency that the author of Hebrews is trying to demonstrate between this person, Yeshua, who's being identified and God himself. And so we see that in this ref, in these references. There, again, there are a number of references I was able to discover in which God is, the term Savior is used for, for God. Let's move on to verse 3A, which continues, and he is the radiance of his glory. So he becomes, so what does that conjure up for, for us? What, what image should that be conjuring up for us when we say the? The Holy Spirit.
Radi, his glory is radiated through God, through Yeshua, God's glory.
Okay, so what is that, what is that indication of for you?
Kind of manifested or sent out, you know, it's emitted.
Yeah.
Um, so we see God's glory, in other words.
So what's the word for that? Shekinah, right? So this, the Shekinah is this sort of sense in the Hebrew scriptures of the presence of God. And in Jewish tradition, the Shekinah is this sort of, this is what you're saying, emanating from the person of God, becomes something that's tangible to humans. Uh, something evident about the presence of God. Now, lots and lots of stories about the Shekinah in Jewish tradition. So, uh, somehow he, this makes him part of God, at least part of God. This idea of, because the radiance of his glory is a clear allusion to Shekinah, glory of God, which inhabited the Mishkan, the first temple. So.
Where are you reading now?
This is from my notes.
This translation says, the very expression of God's essence.
The very expression of.
You've got God's essence, and then you've got the expression of it, apparently that's Yeshua.
Right. So let's take a look at something, so we've got a feel for this. In Exodus, the last chapter. When the, the 40th chapter of Exodus, when they. Jared?
Yeah.
Quick, quickly. So I made 30 copies of the thing, so if we have to use it.
Okay.
God forbid that we use it, but. Yeah, we'll see what happens. Maybe we should leave it off until we need it. So let's see, let's read from verse 34. Now, the, the tent is erected, everything is in place. Everything is ready to rock and roll. And what does 34 tell us? It says, then the cloud covered the tent of meeting and the glory of the Lord, the cavod of God, filled the tabernacle. And it says Moses was not able to enter the tent of meeting because the cloud settled on it and the glory of the Lord filled the tabernacle. So it's this physical, almost, well, it must be some kind of physical presence that prevented Moses from, Moses from getting in there, you know, which is, you know, big. And this is what we're being told about Yeshua. So that we can make the equivalence that it was Yeshua who occupied that temple. Who was there physically present in the tabernacle. Okay? And I love, you know, there's a story, we all know the story from Luke, chapter two, when Yeshua as a baby is brought to the temple for the first time. And the man Simeon, seeing him there prophesies over Yeshua, right? And then you'll remember that says, he says, now, Lord, you're, you are releasing your bondservant to depart in peace according to your word, for my eyes have seen your salvation. So that's the word, Yeshua. And, uh, if this word can translate into Hebrew. Which you have prepared in the presence of, I should say, Yeshua, Yeshua, you know? Which you have prepared in the presence of all people. And then it says, a light of revelation to the Gentiles and the glory of your people, Israel. And he uses this terminology, the same, which allude, in my mind, alludes to the glory of God, because every time the glory of God is talked about in the Hebrew scriptures, it's always about God's physical presence. Something about the Shekinah or something to that effect. And you can see this multiple times in the Hebrew scriptures, when the glory of God is, uh, is, is referenced, uh, referenced there. So here's an interesting little tidbit of information from as far as I can tell. So I just read you the portion where the glory of the Lord filled the Mishkan, right? And we saw how that happened. So if you go over into First Kings, chapter eight, I think it's chapter eight. Let's see. Uh, chapter eight, I think it's the end of chapter eight. Uh, let me see if I can find this.
Yeah, eight, 10.
10, thank you. Right.
Verse 10.
Verse 10. Right, it says, it happened that when the priests came from the holy place, the cloud filled the house of the Lord, so that the priests could not stand to minister because of the cloud, for the glory of the Lord filled the house of the Lord. So once again, in this first temple, the glory of the Lord filled the place. Okay? And the same thing happened, same reaction. The priests couldn't get in, you know, it is, you know, that, that uh, the physical presence. The, here's it, but here's the interesting thing. We find no such record of that happening in the second temple. There's no record of it in the Hebrew scriptures, nor is there any record of it anywhere else that I'm aware that the glory of the Lord filled the second temple. In fact, there was no ark in there. Like in the first temple and the, and, and in the Mishkan, the ark wasn't in there. All they had in there was a table of incense. Okay?
Where was it?
The ark was gone by then. Nobody knows where that is. Didn't you see, you know, Raiders of the Lost Ark? It's in a warehouse in Hollywood.
I never saw Raiders of the Lost Ark.
So, uh, we don't know where that is. You know, it's gone, you know, the, the ark itself, which contained the, you know, the staff of Aaron and and, and some mana and whatever. In fact, there's a story told, I don't know if it's true or not, but there's a story told that when Pompey the Great came, uh, to Judea, uh, you know, somewhere around 50 CE or whatever it was. Uh, he wanted to see what the fuss was about in this temple of theirs. So he, he went, he had the audacity to say, well, you know, I'm just gonna go in. So he just marched into the temple and opened up the curtain and walked into the Holy of Holies. And said, what's wrong with these people? There's nothing in here. It's an empty room. These people are nuts. That's what they, and that's what they thought about it. They were crazy. Cause they had, there was, the guy opens the curtain thinking he's gonna see all kinds of, you know, some statue or whatever he thinks he's gonna see, what you would see in a Roman temple. Instead, nothing, nothing. So, uh, you know, so I'm thinking, well, the glory of the Lord never seems to have appeared in the, in the temple of Herod. It was never there. Beautiful as the building was, the glory of the Lord was not there, except this. That when Simeon sees Yeshua, for the very first time, the glory of the Lord appears in the temple. He becomes the glory of the Lord that is in the temple.
What verse is that?
It's in Luke 20, chapter two, verses 29 through 32. It says, my eyes have seen your salvation, which you have prepared in the presence of all the people, a light of revelation to the Gentiles and the glory of your people as well. So again, Messiah Yeshua is equated with that glory, which we saw both times entering into the first Mishkan and then the first temple. And now when Yeshua appears in the, uh, in the, in the temple of Herod as a baby, the glory of the Lord returns to the temple. Okay? So as if the evidence isn't, you know, strong enough already, he continues in verse 3B of Hebrews. And he's the exact representation of his nature. And upholds all things by the word of his power. So he further clarifies this by describing his identity, the identity he shares with the God of Israel. And this is how it's done, people. We, there's, Richard Balcom has a great book on this subject. In which he talks about the divinity of Yeshua. And how we understand that divinity is through, um, the shared identity that Yeshua has with God. These, these comparisons that continually get made. See, what we often wanna do. How, how do most people who wanna, you know, witness to Jewish people do this? How, how do you do it, right? And when you go see a Jewish person, here's what you start doing. You start, um, you start looking at prophecies. And you look at some prophecy, uh, like Isaiah, you know, seven, you know, born, you know, virgin and the whole smear. And, you know, like, I don't know too many people. And, you know, like, I don't know too many people convinced by that. Or, or any of the other tundits of prophecies that are in there. Some people are. Some people are convinced by that. But it can always argue, if you talk to, if you talk to many Jewish people that I've talked to, say, well, that's how you see that. That's how you guys interpreted that scripture. Here's how we interpret it. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean some virgin, you know, many years from now, is talking about Isaiah's kid or whatever, you know, how they interpret that. And the same thing may be true of any number of prophetic statements. Okay? And some of them are really interesting and compelling, if you want, if you want to look at it that way. But what, what, the interesting thing that Balkam does in his, in his, uh, book, is he talks about how it is that God and Yeshua are comparable in terms of their identity. The identity that they share. So Yeshua is this unique son. And he is the one, the heir of all things, the one who was made the world. And the radiance of God. And now he's called the exact representation of God's nature.
It's interesting because, um, you know, I remember sitting in a Bible class with Paul, and he was saying that many Jews interpret the scriptures that a Christian would relate to Yeshua as something that refers to Israel as a whole.
Well, that's, that's one of the excuses made for Isaiah fifty-three, for instance.
But the point is that Paul made the point that Yeshua identifies as the essence of Israel as a whole. So not only does he identify as God, but also as Israel.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Isn't that interesting?
Yes. Well, Matt, the, the, in my opinion, the Gospel of Matthew is an effort to do that very thing. To, to demonstrate Yeshua as the one man Israel, if you will.
Right.
You know, that in, in, in himself, he, he embodies Israel as a whole. That's why his life was patterned the way it was patterned. You know, he's born, and then he's, you know, there's, it's killed, you know, all the babies are killed, just like in the story of Moses and the story of the Exodus. All the babies are persecuted. Then he has to, he goes into Egypt, right? And it says, "Why did he go into Egypt? Because out of Egypt I called my son." He goes into the desert, into the desert, and there he's tempted for forty days, you know, like Israel was for forty years, and so on, so forth. And, um, and then, you know, he winds up at the mountain of, you know, the mountain and gives the law and interpretation of the Torah and so on. Anyway. So, yes, so by the way, and this is something, this was a thing that we were driving at. There's nobody here, right? Excuse me. Let me see, in case somebody's wondering what this is. Who is this? So I'm sitting by this room. Mm-hmm. Yes. About an hour and a half. Okay. All right, well, now somebody inquiring about this. Uh. Sorry, folks. Um. Who was I? Oh, I, I was mentioning a couple of weeks ago when we were discussing the story of Jacob and his sons. And how Jacob, when speaking to Joseph, adopted the two sons of Joseph as his own children. Okay? Which, all of this is part of this, uh, of the, how am I gonna express it? The anatomy of Israel. That God, who ultimately brings the Messiah Yeshua into the family of Israel. He, you know, Yeshua doesn't just come down out of the heavens and become the Savior of the world. God could have done it like that, I presume, you know? He could have just sent some, some, you know, he could have just come down as some generic human being. Right? But he chose not to. He, he chose to come as a Jew. Because God has inextricably tied himself to Israel ontologically. I mean, I don't know how else to say, you know, like, you know, physically. Part of Israel's DNA has to do with God, or at least some of God's DNA is mixed with the DNA of Israel, you know?
From what this is teaching, that Yeshua identifies with God, but he also identifies with Israel.
Yes. Oh, yes. Yes, it's all bound up together. Another reason why, Ed, you know, whatever was said in chapter eight of Hebrews does not mean what you think it means. Okay? Or for all.
I know that.
I know, explaining it is not that easy, but, you know, but, but let us at least understand that. Okay? So. So again, he's further clarifying this by describ, but, but by describing his identity, the identity he shares with the God of Israel. Uh, and this makes it perfectly clear. I mean, he's the exact representation of his being. You know, you know, there's another text which clarifies this too, which is found in first, not, not first, in Colossians. Chapter one. And this is, this is something we say each week as part of our liturgy, so. Should be familiar to you. So in Colossians, chapter one. Here it says, "When we, and we, we call this prayer in our liturgy, Salam HaElohim." The image of God, right? Uh, it says in here in verse fifteen, "He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn of all creation. For by him all things were created, both in the heavens and earth, visible, invisible, whether thrones and dominions, rules or authorities. All things have been created through him and for him." Okay? So, uh, so this is, so Yeshua then is being, again, being equated with, with God. Um, so the entire premise of this missive is the notion that Yeshua and God share the same identity. And thus, Yeshua is uniquely qualified to be our Savior. This is where this whole notion of Savior comes in. Earlier, we had talked about him being the Savior and God being the Savior. We looked at those texts, and I could give you a whole bunch of quotations. Second Samuel twenty-two, Psalm seventeen, Isaiah fifty-three, Isaiah forty-five, Hosea thirty thirteen. All of them refer to God as the only Savior of Israel. But here, all of this identifying of Yeshua with the identity of God is that which then qualifies him uniquely to be the Savior of Israel, the Savior of God's people. Okay? If he were not, then he could not be the Savior, because God is the Savior of his people. See? Okay? So again, so the, so the author of Hebrews is trying, is, is working very hard at the beginning of this thing to establish this cred, this cred for her, for Yeshua. Because again, understand, let's try and again, keep our heads, at least in some measure of proximity, to the people to whom the letter is being written. You put your faith in this Yeshua guy. Let's say you're, you know, you're, you're one, this is written to the Hebrews, so you're a Jew, and you've again, in the face of serious opposition. You have placed your faith in this Yeshua person. Uh, and he is, um, you know, he's supposed to be coming back very soon. And instead, what you see are the Romans destroying everything that you held dear. What is happening to your confidence in who this Yeshua person is? It's being worn down, eroded. You're saying to yourself, "I need to reevaluate." Uh, maybe my, you know, the rest of the people were right, you know, maybe the, maybe the zealous were right in trying to fight, you know, whatever, whatever you might be saying. Uh, so one can see how their, you know, their, their faith is being shaken, and yet, so what the author is doing is saying, "Listen, here is the unshakable truth. And let me show you what our current circumstances mean, and what Messiah Yeshua means in the light of those circumstances." So he first has to establish, and this guy's a lawyer, obviously, you know, he's gonna establish these realities for us, you know, the foundation of it, which is that Messiah Yeshua is uniquely qualified to be our Savior because he shares the identity of God. So again, Richard Balkam, for instance, who I got a lot of this, you know, he does some phenomenal work. He wrote a book called God Crucified, which is magnificent work. Uh, and it, and it talks about the identity of God from a Jew, uh, how the notion of the Messiah as part of the identity of God is a Jewish thing. It's not something Christians made up. So he talks about this, he says, he identifies these aspects of God's identity as understood by the Jewish people. These aspects, according to Hebrews and all the apostolic writings, are shared by Messiah Yeshua as well. So Kifi, so this is a quotation from his, from his book. "The key features of the, of the unique identity of God are these. One, God is the sole creator of all things. All other things are created by God, right? God is the sole sovereign ruler of all, over all things. All others are subject to God's rule. God is known through his narrative identity. That is, who God is in the story of his dealings with the creation and all nations in Israel, right? That's why when Moses wanted to see God, he got a description of God's character in the thirteen attributes of God. And then the rest of the stor, the rest of the Bible is basically telling us stories about how God interacts with humanity, right? Doesn't sit there and give you ontological descriptions of God. Okay, God is like seventeen feet tall and, and has, you know, blonde hair and, you know, and is. No, we get none of that. The Bible, that makes no effort at that sort of silliness. Instead, we hear about God's love and compassion for Israel. His anger at Israel when they, when they do things incorrectly. How he deals with God, with their enemies. It's how he's faithful to fulfill his promises, no matter what. Again, this, you know, this is how we, that, this is this whole, God is known through his narrative identity. And so what do we have in Yeshua? The same thing. It's just, you know, the gospels are stories about this individual who came into our lives and who did, who, who did all these things. It's only later that the Christians decided they had to break that down and figure out who, you know, way, is he God, or, you know? Three and one, one and three, you know, you know, code, you know, give me a break with that. They couldn't possibly know any of that. So all we can tell is how God interacts with us. And that will tell us who he is. God will achieve his eschatological rule when all creatures acknowledge Hashem's sole deity. And the name of Hashem names God in his unique identity, yeah? God, that's only, only God has that name. God alone may and must be worshiped, since worship is acknowledgement of God's sole identity, a sole deity. God alone is fully eternal, self-existent from past to future. All right, so these are key features of, of the identity of God. And I got, hey, you did a great job getting that sound right last week. We're gonna get it right this week, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Okay. So all of these are fe, features that we're gonna look at. And verse, continuing in verse three. It says, "When he had made purification for sins, he sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high, having become as much better than the angels, as he has inherited a more excellent name than they." So Balkam further drives home the deity of the Son. In this comparison of the attributes of God's identity, remember up here? With the author's sevenfold description of Yeshua. So go back to the letter to the Hebrews. And if you pick it up. Sorry, guys, I don't know what, I don't know what just happened there. So picking it up in verse five. This is where it is. All right. Uh. He says, "For to which of the angels did he ever say, 'You are my son; today I have begotten you, and again I will be a father to him, and he shall be a son to me.'" And when he says, "When he again brings the firstborn into the world," uh, uh, he says, "And let all the angels of God worship him." And the angel, and of the, and of the angels, he says, "Who makes his angels, uh, winds and ministers of flame and fire? But of the Son, he says, 'Your throne, O God, is forever, and the righteous scepter is the scepter of his kingdom. You have loved righteousness and hated lawlessness. Therefore, God, your God, has anointed you with the oil of gladness above your companions. And you, Lord, in the beginning laid the foundations of the earth, and the heavens are the works of your hands, and they will perish, but you remain, and they all will become old like a garment, and like a mantle you'll roll them up. Like a garment, they will also be, uh, also be changed, but you are the same, and your years will not come to an end." Okay, so, "But to which of the angels, as he ever said, 'Sit at my right hand, till I make your enemies a footstool for your feet? Are they not all ministering spirits, sent out to render service for the sake of those who inherit salvation?" So in, there's uh, in that description, it's a sevenfold, there are seven things that identify Yeshua. Equating them with those key features of the unique identity of God I just described, and I put them side by side for you. All right? So first it says, "Whom he appointed the heir of all things." So he has the eschatological rule over everything. God is the sole creator of all things and the sole sovereign ruler of all things, right? Through whom he also created the world. So he is the agent of creation, God, but it says, "God is the sole creator." Being the reflection of God's glory and the exact imprint of God's very being, right? So his eternal divi, he's a reflection of the eternal divine being. Okay, remember, so he's saying all of these things in this poem that he's, you know, poem. It's a string of verses. This is something that the author of Hebrews does continually. There's a lot of Hebrew scripture quotation, including stuff from the Torah. So if the Torah does, is obsolete, why is he bothering to quote it? Right? You know? So. So here he's saying all of these things. Um. Most people believe this about the letter to the Hebrews. It was a sermon. It was written as a sermon that ultimately got passed along from one group to another. So think about it in those terms. If you think about it as a sermon, maybe it, it gives you a little, a little different feel for, for what the letter is saying. So here, so we talked about the eternal divine being comparison. And he goes on, "Sustaining all things by his powerful word." There's another one of the descriptions that's given to him. So God's providential sovereignty over all things. God is the one who not only created all things, but he keeps all things going. If God were to withdraw his grace from us, what happens? The world, you know, goes away. You know, is, I, I did this thing, I, I did some research once upon a time, where, uh, you know, I'm not much of a scientist person. But, uh, the physicists in the world, you know, we live in, in what people think is an expanding universe. Uh, so it's a couple of theories, so, you know, we know about the Big Bang right now, everything is supposed to be expanding outward. But they can, they have something called the redshift, and they look at. When they look at the light, there's a red shift in, in, in the comparison between when, the way uh, points of light are moving. And when you have a red shift, that means they're moving outward. Cause a blue shift, it would mean they were moving closer. So, uh, we're expanding, but the universe remains relatively constant even despite that's the expansion. And they don't, it can't account for it because there's not enough mass in the universe to hold it all together. You know, gra, gravity being what it is, where gravity is, you know, gravity is what keeps you from flying apart. So they want to know how to account for this. So this is where dark matter comes in. So dark matter is, they can't see it, they don't, it can't, it's something they assume, they have to assume. So I'm saying, yeah, it, it probably is dark matter there. It's probably what God uses to hold the universe together. And if he decides he doesn't want to hold it together again, all he has to do is snap his fingers and everything, you know, flies apart. You know, like in the Infinity Wars thing, and then hits the button and everything disappears. Okay. So, so it says here, uh, "Having made purification for sins." This is Yeshua's high priestly appointment, but God is the Savior. He's the only one who can forgive sins. Remember that story about Yeshua and that, you know, he's, he's saying, uh, he heals somebody. And what, and he says, "Son, your sins are forgiven." And if people, some of the people there get angry with him, it's, "Who are you to forgive sins? Only God can forgive sins." Yeah, right. Exactly. So what, what's it easy to say, rise and you know, get up and walk, or, you know? So, but so that you know that the Son of Man has the power to forgive sins, I said. You know? So he, so there's another indication. So it says, "He, he, he sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high in his exaltation to God's throne." So he sits on the throne of God. There's this uh, wonderful story in Ja, in Daniel, it's actually in Daniel. In Daniel. Okay. So in Daniel, chapter seven, verse nine, Daniel has a vision, a heavenly vision. And it says, "I kept looking until thrones, thrones were set up, not one throne. And the ancient of days took his seat." And it gives you this description, "His vest was like white snow, and hair had pure wool, and his throne was ablaze with flames." And I kept looking. Uh, verse thirteen, "I kept looking in the night visions, and behold, with the clouds of heaven, one like a son of man was coming, came up the ancient, ancient of days, and was presented before him. And to him was given dominion, glory, and a kingdom, that all the people, nations, and men of every language might serve him." So he said before the, the second, so that even the rabbis know, say this, that the second throne was set up for this one. There's an argument between one rabbi and then actually in the almah about this. Uh, because one says, "No, no, no, it can't be, uh, the son of David, can't be that." But the, instead, the throne was one for judgment and one for mercy, or something like that. But then the, the, the rabbis overturn them and say, "No, no, this is what the son of David is throwing." So there's an argument, you know, he, but among the, among the Jewish people, there's this understanding that they were thrown, set up in heaven, one for God and one for Messiah. So here we see this. "He sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high." This is Messiah, sitting down at the right hand of God. Okay? And then finally, "Having become as much superior to the angels, as the name he has inherited is more excellent than theirs," and which is this identification with the name of Hashem. So in all of these ways, the Messiah demonstrates his, uh, affinity with the identity of God. That they're, you know, that they share that same identity. This is the way we can demonstrate this. Uh, and this is the way the, 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 the author of the letter to the Hebrews wants to identify who this Messiah is. So the first thing he establishes in his argument about who Yeshua is and why we need to remain confident in the Messiah is that he is God. He is God's son, unique son, and shares in the identity of the Holy One himself. So have confidence in that. Don't be shaken by the circumstances that you're finding yourself in at this time in the history. Sometimes it can happen, you know, or maybe in our personal circumstances, things get so shaky that we feel like we cannot, we cannot trust God anymore. Maybe we were wrong. Maybe everything we assumed all these many years was false and that we need to reconsider. And he's saying, "No. No, because the Son of Man is precisely who we said he was." And this is his first, this is what he establishes as the thing in the, uh, as the first order of business. Okay, we have a couple of minutes, so we'll, we'll, uh, we can, uh, uh, let me see if I have any other notes I want to share with you about this. Other than, it says, so you'll note, let me just note this. So, uh, he's the son of the, uh, the son of God, the one who inherits God's name, not merely as one of his messengers, which is what he says at the end of the uh, chapter there. If you get back to the end. Says, uh, in verse thirteen and fourteen, he says, "But to which of the angels, as he ever said, 'Sit at my right hand until I make your enemies a footstool for your feet? Are they not ministering spirits, sent out to render service for the sake of those who inherit salvation?" So this becomes his transitional statement. He's gonna move to a, a little bit different portion of the discussion. Cause here he has established him as the, as identified with the Father. He's not an angel. And this is one of the things that's going on, gonna be going on through the rest of this book. Uh, the rest of the sermon, the Messiah issue is superiority to every other thing that they might be considering as part of the problem. Remember, these, these folks have some idea of what, the way things are supposed to be. And they're, and, and they're all falling apart. But they have to realize that in Messiah Yeshua was the final word. We had all of these words at the very beginning. Long ago, God spoke through the prophets in many portions, in many ways. And now comes the final word in the Messiah Yeshua. And in the Messiah Yeshua, he sums it up with this sevenfold quotation from various scriptures. Right? All of these seven, by the way, it's these, it's seven scriptures, which I find interesting in itself, you know, that he, he, I don't know that that's a random number there. They picked seven scriptures to give, bring us a total picture of who the Messiah is in relationship to the Father. Okay? And, um, but now he wants to address the issue of the angels through whom the first covenant was delivered. Okay? So I just want to go into this one verse, uh, one, one set of verses here at the beginning of chapter two. And we'll end there for today. Says, "For this reason we must pay closer attention to what we have heard." You're gonna see, there are a series of warnings in the letter to the Hebrews. A series of warnings, mostly at transitional points in his message. In which he's given us all this information regarding our circumstances. And then delivers a warning if we don't heed it. If we don't pay attention. So he says, "For this reason we must pay closer attention to what we've heard, so that we do not drift away from it. For if the word spoken through angels proved unalterable, meaning that which was delivered by the messengers Melachim of God." I'm not sure this is exactly the terminology here. I, I, I'm gonna do some more research on this for you folks. But this word angels. And, and let me see what it is in the Greek. Should look at the, should look at this in the Hebrews. So here, so the term is, uh, Angelos, I guess that's how you pronounce it. I'm not pro at the Greek. But, uh, interesting, I have a Hebrew, a Hebrew New Testament translation here, which uses the term Melachim. Melachim, okay, which is, Malach is a messenger. It's all mostly translated angel. But it's a messenger, someone who delivers messages for God, basically. So I'm, I wonder whether or not this might be a better, uh, yeah. So in the Young's literal, literal translation, Young's literal translation of the Hebrews, of, of this portion of Hebrews. Now Young's literal translation, for those of you who may not be familiar, is, um, a very wooden, word-for-word translation. Okay? The very wooden translation. And he uses, whoops, okay. He uses the term, it is how he translates the verse. He says, "For if the word being spoken through messengers did not, uh, did become steadfast, and every transgression and disobedience did receive a just recompense." So he translates the word Angelos as messenger, not angel. Okay, so for me, this is, uh, here's, yeah, they say, they say angel, most of the, most translations use angels, but this, but I, Young's, I use Young's literal translation because very often I want to know exactly what the word means, but they don't even bother whether the English is like, sounds good or not, you know? Is because here, it makes sense when you take it back to the beginning of Hebrews, the first, the first verse of Hebrews. That God long ago spoke to the fathers in the prophets in many portions and many ways. These were the messengers of God, the prophets. The Neveim were people who delivered messages, who delivered the word of God to the people. Even Moses, who was the greatest of them, was a messenger of God. He, he heard from God, he took the word and he wrote it down and he, and he delivered it to the people. So he was a messenger too. So here, if we, if we understand this verse now to mean messenger rather than angel, we can understand that what's, what's being said here. Um, "For if the word spoken through messengers proved unalterable, through the prophets and through Moses and such, uh, proved unalterable, and every transgression, disobedience received a just penalty, how will we escape if we neglect so great a salvation?" This final word in the Messiah issue. If we, if we're gonna reject the Messiah, then what's left for us? Is he saying? "After it was, uh, at the first spoken through the Lord, it was confirmed, uh, confirmed to us by those who heard." Oh, by the way, this is how we know that whoever this person was was not one of the apostles, for sure. "After it was at the first spoken through the Lord, it was confirmed to us by those who heard." So this guy is like third, getting the information third hand. He's getting it from, from, probably from the apostles.
What guy?
The author of, of Hebrews, yeah. So for that reason, I know it wasn't somebody like Paul, for instance. You know, because this person confirms that it wasn't, it's not Paul, by saying what he's saying here. Okay?
We consider angels messengers, guys?
Yeah, they are. Of course, they, they are messengers of a specific kind. But so were the prophets. So was Moses. So was David, for that matter. Right? All of these are, you know, can, can be considered the messengers of the Lord. There was a messenger, somebody who delivers a word from some, from one party to another, right? So to me, it makes, to me, and just in the reading of it, makes more sense to consider that, you know, see, the problem with using the term angels is all of a sudden like there's this whole mythology that arises out of how, you know, what happened on Mount Sinai and stuff, you know, this, this, and there really is a whole mythology about that. Instead of the notion that Moses went up to the mountain and there he sat with Hashem or whoever Hashem's representative, some people think of him as Messiah himself, no, some, and wrote down everything the Lord told him. Right? And then came back to the people when delivered, delivered the word of God to them. Okay, so maybe it was angels, maybe some angelic beings who were representing God on the mountain. But, but then later on, the Bible says, you know, God, Moses who knew God face to face. What do I, what am I supposed to do with that text? Right? So I think for our purposes, it doesn't really matter. The whole idea was there's messengers and there was a message. And that now Messiah Yeshua has the final message. That's why he's giving us this warning. "For this reason we must pay closer attention to what we've heard, so that we do not drift away from it. For if the word spoken by those messengers proved unalterable, how much more so?" He's using a cold, they call mayor for us, if it, if it was that important when they said it, how much more important is it for us to heed the word of the Messiah Yeshua? Who's so far above them all. And as he's already demonstrated how far above them all he is, and he's going to do that a little even further in this, in second chapter. Okay. So we'll end here and we'll pick it up in chapter two next week. Uh, we'll continue with our study then. And and, uh, I hope we'll have a wonderful service this afternoon for you. Now, we are having some issues with our projectors. So what we did was we copied out, uh, we made a number of copies of all the words of the service. So if you want to pick one of those up, um, maybe you can share it with somebody who's, if you're near somebody, because we only have a limited number of copies of those things. Uh, so hopefully, uh, and Ed, I'll, I'm gonna email you a copy of that in case the words, uh, we're not flashing on the screen there. Cause we've been having, we, we, we're actually gonna have it hardwired this week because right now it uses wireless technology and that's not working for us. So we gotta get, we got a hardwired system. Anyway, so let's just have a word of prayer as we, uh, prepare for the service. So Lord our God, we, we just thank you for the living word, the final word on our salvation in Messiah issue. And though things may not always look like they're progressing the way we want to, we know that you are a faithful God who will achieve his, uh, goals for us in the long term. So help us to remain faithful, to, to, to heed the word and to live by it as best we can through the help, help of your Holy Spirit. And we pray for our service this afternoon, Lord God, that you will, uh, just rejoice in our worship, uh, our sharing of Messiah's meal and our fellowship together, Lord God. And again, and yes, God, we pray for the projectors so that they might work too. So that we can have a smooth and, uh, and an easy service. We pray these things now. Bisham Yeshua.